Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council. This Tuesday, May 2, 2022. It's hard to believe that we've gone through a third of the year already. And I don't know if anyone danced around the maypole yesterday, or they even do that. I can remember doing it in kindergarten, but that was before a lot of members on council were probably even in kindergarten, except for the older like Mr. Reynolds.
Boy, he put his foot in his mouth on that one.
Just sitting here.
Councilman Reynolds, isn't this where you ask it? They had to move the horses off the maypole before he did that?
Only because he and I were at high school together, so.
I'll still call you the rookie, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, David. He was a few years younger than I. Many years younger. Yeah, many, many years. Except I still have some of this on. Hey!
What'd you do?
So anyways, we're here in council chambers and it's being live streamed on YouTube. It's after 7:30 PM. Next meeting will be Monday, May 16, 2022. Misery loves company, Mr. Reynolds.
There you go.
Mr. Paulo, as Clerk of Council, would you please call the roll?
Can I just say that I think we know that you're in a better mood because tax season is over?
Yes. Even that, I'm still suffering from the fog of tax season. I really don't know what I'm doing up here tonight.
All right.
I second that.
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Ms. Knappich.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Reynolds.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
Okay, we have a full complement of councils. There is a quorum. The agenda will remain as presented. And at this time, I would ask you to join the members of city council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And I will look for a motion to approve the minutes of April 18, 2022.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Silvestri to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. All in favor of approving the minutes of April 18, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And the minutes of April 18, 2022 are hereby approved. Mr. Mayor, it's your time to shine and welcome, and we look forward to what you have to offer this evening.
Thank you there, President Biden. I appreciate it, and I promise I won't pick on you, Mr. Reynolds, from up here. It's been a busy couple of weeks for our Worcester team since our last council meeting. I'll try to quickly summarize that. We had normal monthly meetings of the Hospital Finance Committee and Board of Governors, Dispatch Board, Main Street Board, Worcester Growth Board. Went to Worcester City School Board meeting to support the TIF district. We attended the Children's Advocacy Center open house. And the College of Worcester Presidential Search Committee held a listening session that a number of you and our team were present at. So we appreciate having that chance to visit with the search committee. I'm sad to report that the passing of Gary Thompson happened on April 27 last week. Gary served our city and community well over his lifetime. He served on city council for 23 years as a fourth ward councilman, council president pro tem, and city council president. He then served the past 13 years and four months on the Worcester Community Hospital Board of Governors as Worcester's first ward representative. Gary worked for the College of Worcester for many years, lastly in their HR department. Gary lived a life dedicated to service, and he will be missed. We held a dedication and ribbon cutting of Clear Creek Park and Arbor Day celebration this past Friday. We had a nice turnout and a beautiful day, thanks to Dick and Judy Seaman for their generosity and leadership in our city. The Urban Forestry Committee helped keep our city as a Tree City USA for the 44th year, one of the longest Ohio cities, with Springfield and Westerville the other two to hold the title. We got to celebrate the swearing in of 20 EMS firefighters today at 5:00 PM. Most of these individuals have been serving our city for a few years, but due to the COVID virus, we held up doing the official ceremony. It was a great honor to be involved with our fire team. And lastly, Joel wants to notify you that he plans to have legislation on next meeting's agenda on ward boundary descriptions for adjusted ward makeup due to the info from the 2020 census numbers. So if you have any remarks or thoughts on that, please let Joel know. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, President Biden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We have two liquor license petitions, one from Loch Ness Enterprises and the other HPOP Holdings. If you would read the first one, please, Mr. Paulo.
Okay, from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. Loch Ness Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Omaha Ma Bob's Barbecue, first floor and basement, 128 South Market Street, Worcester, Ohio, 44691.
And as you probably recall, because we've done this numerous times, we can either request that a hearing be held here in the county seat, held down in Columbus, or we can waive hearing. What's your pleasure?
Move to waive.
Motion to waive hearing by Ms. Knappich. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Would you please call the roll on the motion to waive the hearing?
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri.
Yes.
And Ms. Warden.
Yes.
And the hearing will be waived for Loch Ness Enterprises. That brings us to the second one, HPOP Holdings. If you would please read that, Mr. Paulo.
HPOP Holdings LLC, doing business as Beef O'Brady's, 244 South Market Street and Patio, Worcester, Ohio, 44691.
Once again, the same choices, have a hearing here in the county seat, have a hearing down in Columbus, or we can waive the hearing.
Move to waive.
Motion to waive hearing by Ms. Knappich. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Mr. Paulo, would you please call the roll on the motion to waive the hearing?
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri.
Yes.
And Ms. Warden.
Yes.
The hearing for this one will be waived as well. And Mr. Paulo, if you would do as you've always done, please notify the Department of Liquor Control. We waive the hearing on both of these petitions. We have three people signed up on agenda items. First one is Jamie Tangen. If you can come to the lectern here and state your name and address and tell us what you're here to speak on, although you've put it here, but I'll let everyone be fain surprised why you're here.
My name is Jamie Tangen. I live at 565 Oakley, and I'm here to talk about the sidewalks that are being discussed. I have, well, two things. One, question. If the decision gets made tonight not to put sidewalks in, is that, how long does that decision last for? Could that be, could it be brought up in another, you know, three, four years and then have to be re-discussed? Or is the decision pretty much a one-time deal? Second one is just my, my husband's stance on it. We, I actually grew up in the neighborhood from 1983 until 2003. My family lived there for about 20 years, and I appreciate the walkability of the neighborhood. I recognize that sidewalks enhance our neighborhood. It makes it a family-friendly place. I have two small kids. We love taking walks down the street. However, I don't think that the $35,000 cost to put sidewalks in, in that small strip, is worth that much. You know, we can cross the street and use the sidewalk on the other side, and we think it's enough. So it seems like not really a wise use of funds, and we think that there's probably other places that that money could go towards, places that don't have any sidewalks or, you know, other projects in the city. Thank you.
Judy Carney, again, please come to lectern and state your name and address, please, what you're here to speak on.
My name is Judy Carney. I'm at 547 Oakley Road. I'm beside Jamie, and I have about the same feelings of Jamie on it. I just would like to know tonight, because I'm in the process of redoing my yard, and I don't want to redo, redo. So I'd like to know tonight, and also, as a tag on to her question, how long is this good for? You know, is it good for 10 years? Good for five? Because, you know, prices just go up. So I'd just like to know tonight, like where we stand on it.
And lastly, Brent Rice, again, please come to lectern, state your name and address.
Good evening all. Brent Rice, my wife and I are at 573 Oakley. And similar to my neighbors who are here this evening, and a number of those who I think who have communicated with council members, we're also opposed to the addition of the sidewalks, as we don't see that it enhances, that it creates additional benefit to what's present already. Despite the considerations that you have to make in the neighborhoods, yeah, I think that there are far better areas in which the assessment can apply. And where we are with sidewalks right now, we think is great for the neighborhood. So thank you for your consideration.
And to answer your question, I'll give you my take on it. I'd never say never, but if you read the ordinance, the only way I see that, and I think most of the council agrees, is, you know, you always have the right to petition. So any of the property owners there that would be affected down the road could petition all of a sudden to have sidewalks. Or for some reason, which I am sure escapes most of the members of council at the moment, we would have to feel there was a necessity for it and pass a resolution of necessity. So again, I would never say never, but I would think that it's going to be a long time before this matter would be revisited. But you never know, and the older I get, I realize that I learn something or I'm surprised by something new every day when I think I've seen it all. But I think it's safe to say, I probably will not see sidewalks there in my lifetime. So hopefully that gives you an inkling as to how long you have. Okay, that brings us to committee reports. I don't think we've had a committee meeting since we had the meeting before council on the 18th of April. And no public hearings tonight, so that will bring us right into unfinished business, which will be Ms. Warden presenting the second reading of Resolution Number 2022-18. But before I get to you, Ms. Warden, I will have Ms...
DePaula.
I'll have Lynn DePaula, please, read the title.
Thanks, Mike. Resolution Number 2022-18, a resolution declaring the necessity of constructing sidewalks and curb ramps on portions of Oakley Road, Saunders Drive, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden.
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
So I think everyone has had a chance to familiarize themselves with this particular resolution. I said at the last meeting that I was hoping to make a decision at the end of, or by the end of this meeting. Just to do a quick refresh, for those of you at home, this seeks to construct sidewalks along a very small portion of Oakley Road and Saunders Drive. It's just a very small curve that affects, I believe, eight residents. The cost for the project is estimated to be $35,000, which would be split by the city, $8,750, and the eight property owners would split the remaining $26,250 that's involved. Over the past few weeks, we, or I'm sorry, two weeks, we've heard from a number of residents, including those who joined us this evening and voiced their opinions. And there has only been one person who has reached out to me and my colleagues, to my knowledge, to express their desire for the sidewalk, and he is not one of the actual property owners affected. Therefore, after some discussion with fellow councilmen, I believe that it is in our best interest to just table this measure, and we'll just let it set for the time being.
Okay, is that a motion?
Do I have to motion for that? I've never tabled anything.
You have to vote.
Yeah. Sure, let's motion, table this measure.
Okay, motion to table this measure by Ms. Warden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any discussion? I don't think it warrants any, frankly.
It's funny, though. I have thought, you know, we pass measures up here with, you know, multimillion-dollar price tags that get zero interest from the residents, and then something like this, and really, they come out from all over.
I've heard from five of the eight.
Right, so.
Yeah, but this is hitting them in the pocket and...
Sure, yeah. Well, and it's very direct, you know.
And I don't think council even had an inkling that there was a need for it until this came in front of them.
Well, there's still...
Because there wasn't a need.
There's a need.
Yeah, there was no committee meetings or anything, so anyways. So if there's nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to table this measure?
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
Okay, this resolution is tabled. What this means is council has a year from now to bring it back on for a vote, and only council can do so, and it would have to be by a majority of council. And if it doesn't happen within a year, it dies on the vine, so. Anyways, based on the tenor of tonight's meeting, I don't think anyone's going to be anxious to revisit this resolution again. I appreciate you coming and expressing your opinions.
Thank you for coming.
If I could add one more thing, and I think you explained this, Mr. Biden, but just to clarify, so when he said that there's no, you know, it could be several years before this is ever brought up again, and it won't be brought up by us in the next year, but should you decide that you want to put sidewalks in for some reason down the road, you can petition and we can reconsider at that point.
Yeah, we could never deny your right to petition. That's guaranteed. So anyways, thank you for coming. You're welcome to stay, and if you think you have something better to do on a nice few warm spring days we've had, you're welcome to...
You could go for a walk in your neighborhood.
Leave.
On sidewalks. Yeah.
Thanks, Brent.
Thank you.
That brings us now to new business, the first reading of Resolution Number 2022-19. Actually, it is a budgeted item, so Mr. Silvestri, you would not have to suspend the rules. But I do have to ask Mr. Paul to read the title before I get back to you, Mr. Silvestri. If you would please, Mr. Paul.
Resolution Number 2022-19, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a professional services contract for repairs to sewer along Cleveland Road and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Silvestri, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So after speaking with our chief city engineer, Roger Kobelarsik, we have a portion of sanitary sewer along Cleveland Road that has collapsed. So it has failed, and we need to do an emergency repair. And after Roger kind of assessed what it would cost to get that done, he was made aware that it would most likely be over the $50,000 limit for non-bid projects. Although I want to just speak to the diligence of Roger, because he asked five different contractors, so even though he's asking for this not to be bid out, he pretty much did the legwork anyway to ensure that we get the best value. So hats off to Roger for taking care of that. It is in scope. It is 425 linear feet of vitrified clay pipe with PVC pipe. It also includes replacing two manholes and 10 lateral connections, or reconnections in this case. So that being said, like I said, this will come out of the sanitary sewer fund, so it is not coming out of the general fund. It does not require suspension of the rules, so I would hereby move for adoption, Mr. President.
Okay, motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Any discussion? Seems like when a sewer collapses, you need to do something as soon as possible, so I'm going to take that it's basically emergency, so seeing no further discussion, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Knappich?
Yes.
All right, Resolution Number 2022-19 passes. Ordinance Number 2022-07, it'll be presented by Mr. Sanders. It is slated for three readings. Before I get to you, Mr. Sanders, Mr. Paulo, would you please read the title?
Ordinance Number 2022-07, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Wayne Township trustees for compensation of lost property tax revenues due resulting from annexation for immediate enactment.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is related to the properties that we will be discussing here later regarding annexation. And what this is, is basically millage compensation to Wayne Township trustees for the real estate tax revenue sharing, that they will be losing their portion of the millage due to the annexation. This is, as it's been, was described to me, it's something that we've done in the past, and again, with the fact that we work with Wayne Township on numerous road projects and have, you know, direct adjacent territory, territories, boundaries, et cetera. This is just a, it's an easy way to do this, and actually, part of it is required by the Ohio Revised Code. So again, we're just complying with what we need to do in order to make this happen. At this point, I look at this and plan to move this to final, I would just actually motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended, Mr. Sanders. I look to you again.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Any further discussion or questions? The brain trust of the administration's here, so, yes, Mr. Silvestri.
I did just have a few small questions. I noticed that we got signatures from eight of the 10 involved property owners, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, and we're comfortable with that as far as, as far as it not being the full 10? The requirement's just majority, correct?
Majority of individual property owners, yes.
Okay, and so we didn't really get any feedback from the two that didn't sign, or that was...
We did.
Okay.
One, we learned that they were very eager to move forward with the annexation, but in fact, asked if there was anything else that they needed to do in order to sign. But they determined that, well, at this point, we had already filed, so there wasn't a need. A second individual came in to meet with us to learn more about it. They've not necessarily voiced support or opposition to it.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. And really, we're only talking about the percentage split up of $2,900 annually? Is that, is that right? In revenue?
Right now, yes. With the agreement, what can happen is, should there be development, that millage rate can go up a little bit.
Sure.
Reason why this is occurring is we're conforming our boundaries, and that's necessary in order to make the TIF work. But in doing that, that takes away all revenue that the township enjoys. That's not the case on every parcel within the city that is annexed. Certain parcels are in both territories at once, where an individual is voting for mayor and township trustee on the same ballot. That does occur. But in this case, since we're taking that step to conform, Ohio Revised Code has a schedule for sharing those millage revenues for a period of time. In this case, what we're doing with the agreement that they signed will be going for a period of 15 years. The Ohio Revised Code 709.19 schedule will be the minimum, and should the city not be carrying any debt on infrastructure in the 75-acre territory, we will compensate with this agreement, the township trustees up to 100% of the revenues they would have received. We will continue to receive additional revenues on top of that. But that amount of, that 2,900 annually will ultimately depend on how properties continue to be valued, and it would change if there's further development in the future.
And so after we, as the city, are made whole, then we would go back and...
Yeah, so once, once we're made whole, if we're not carrying debt on our infrastructure in that territory, now it would not apply to the Oak Hill Oldman Roundabout portion, but it would apply to this. And this is where we're looking at making a $4.6 million investment to enhance safety. What this does is the township is going to follow, basically how it would work, the township would take a lower percentage share for the first several years, and then after that debt is paid back, if it is paid back, we don't know if it will happen in 15 years, because again, the TIF plan was to run up to possibly 27 years. So again, it kind of depends on what occurs, but when that would happen, then we would continue to compensate them for three additional years beyond what the state statute requires.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
I have a question.
Sure, Mr. Cavan.
So we're still going to send funds, the township is still going to experience funding. Will we still receive any type of service from them for that? We will not. I mean, what... So the Ohio Revised Code 709.19 requires that annexing municipalities share a percentage of their revenues to the township that is losing property. The reason why is that township experiences a net loss in revenue, because property that's taxable moves into a different jurisdiction. Specifically, Wayne Township enjoys 3.1 mils on all property in this territory to the annex. When it moves into the city of Worcester, that millage rate shifts. The city has a 4.2 mils that it would enjoy. Because of other metrics with taxing in that district, those residents actually experience a tax decrease, but the city will actually earn 25% more than the township presently does. And so the township, the city would then, for a period of time, to help offset that loss, compensate the township for a period of years, and that allows them to plan and temporarily adjust. Again, Ohio Revised Code makes this a requirement. What we are offering is slightly enhanced, again, based on taking into consideration the investments that we're going to make. So should the city of Worcester have investments outlying, and that millage has not recovered those costs, that then they're, you know, we'll just follow that 709.19. Okay, I think I'm pretty much following you on that point, but again, will we have, will they snowplow for us? Will they do anything at all? I mean, I mean, for the money that they're going to receive, you know, they don't, they're not going to do anything at all, you know? They're just... No.
They're, they're just...
No. In, in this instance, with the way that Ohio Revised Code has things set up, this, this is how this customarily will, will occur. The township will not be required to provide us any services here. A reason why we would want to provide this support, which is enhanced, is because it is something that is requested of us when we do go forward to the Wayne County Commissioners to request annexation. When we go through the TIF process, we also need cooperation from the Wayne County Commissioners, and this, this agreement ties into that a little bit as well. But, but ultimately, it helps to simplify the process. It's also a show of goodwill, because we do have several maintenance agreements in place with Wayne Township. So, being that this is customary in the state, being that we are asking for their support with the TIF project, it made sense as a way to help bring that in.
I understand.
Refresh my recollection, how much money are we talking about?
Depending on the level of development, it could be anywhere from $2,900 to $50,000 a year. So...
And, correct me if I'm wrong on this one, I guess, I may look to Mr. Druschel, because he's older than I am even on this, but...
He's still alive.
I think, I think there's, part of the explanation is that annexation law used to be much more one-sided, where it was all or nothing. So, there were some really knock-down, drag-out fights between townships and municipalities over those tax dollars. And in order to kind of reduce those a little bit, the legislature went in, and this is one of the means of lessening the financial impact on the townships. So, townships were more willing to go along with the loss of land to a municipality, which allows the development, just like we're talking about here, to take place.
Right.
So, in the abstract, it may sound like, well, jeez, what kind of deal is this? Well, the legislature came up with it, and there was a reason behind that, because they didn't want townships fighting municipalities from expanding at every turn, which is kind of what it had gotten down to at, at one point.
We're at a slight advantage, I guess you could say, in terms of growth. I mean, in, you know, the city swallowing up the township has a whole lot more chance of happening than, than the township swallowing up the city. So, as far as the land grab, it's, it's pretty slanted toward our favor, and I think that's why the Ohio Revised Code, you know, or why the Ohio Legislature passed that measure, but that's my own opinion.
Plus, we might get some income tax revenue that we wouldn't have normally received since they might now be living in the city and not, and not been paying income tax because they were working elsewhere.
Could say it helps to lessen the burden of the loss for the township.
Yeah, I, I fully, I'm with you, I understand that.
If I may add, throughout all of this, each year, the city will have a net gain, even with the sharing.
Right. Yeah.
Anything else? We, we've done these a couple of times before, where we've ended up having a revenue share with the, and I have it on good authority, having had a recent discussion. The Board of Elections hates when you do not conform the boundaries, because it's hard enough to get poll workers, in this case, if you don't conform the boundaries, there has like a little stub precinct that they have to have a special place to vote for those that straddle the city and the, and the township, so. It, it, it's a good thing for everyone all around. Anything further? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvestry?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Okay. Ordnance number 2022-07 passes. Looking at ordinance number 2022-08, it'll be presented by Mr. Sanders. It's slated for three readings, and I guess this ordinance is going to test your stamina there, Mr. Apollo, to get to a reading.
I already complained to Andre about it. Ordnance number 2022-08. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $560,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay the property owner's portion in anticipation of the levy and collection of special assessments of the cost of improving Melrose Drive between certain termini by grading, draining, widening, pavings, resurfacing, constructing curbs, gutters, a multi-use path, sidewalks and driveway approaches, installing storm sewers, catch basins, manholes, water mains, fire hydrants, and traffic control signs, and acquiring any real estate and interest therein required thereby, all together with the necessary appurtenances thereto, and allowing for immediate enactment.
All right. Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not much more to say. Mr. Apollo did say it all. I mean, this, we, we're going to do the improvement of Melrose Drive, and at this point, this is the proposed issue of notes of $560,000 that will be used to, for the purpose of, for the bonds. Estimated life and period of usefulness of the improvement is at least five years. Estimated maximum maturity of the bonds, calculating in accordance with section 133.2 of the Revised Code, and not exceeding the period over which special assessments in anticipation of the collection of which the bonds will be issued, will be payable in 15 years. And the maximum maturity of the notes is December 31, 2027, which would be the last day of the fifth year following the year of issuance of the notes. With that, is there anything that we really need to add, Mr. Dordio?
No, so, what happens, the property owners, once the project is finalized? Once the project is finalized, the property owners will have a chance to, like, 30 days to either, they can pay cash for whatever they were assessed, or they can opt in on, on the issuance. So, depending on how many people pay up or how many people opt in, so, will be a difference. So, max would be 560, if people pay cash upfront, but obviously, that amounts it less. So, I mean, it's really simple, then we'll just issue 14 or 15 years' worth of notes in each, once a year, the county attorney will send a bill for 1/15 of that amount, whatever they're assessed, plus a little bit of interest, whatever the market rate of interest is at the time.
All right. Well, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
A motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sylvestry?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
The rules are suspended. Mr. Sanders, do you have a motion for...
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any discussion? We've passed bonds before. I assume it's a pretty competitive bond market at the moment?
Yes. Yeah, we'll, we'll do this, we'll do what's called online bidding, so essentially, anybody in the world can bet on that, but normally, it's defined in the United States, obviously. We have a good credit waiting, and we have a lot of people that like our debt, so.
Yep. Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sylvestry?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
Ordnance number 2022-08 passes. That brings us to ordinance number 2022-09. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders. The good news, Mr. Apollo, is even though it's for a lot more money, it's a lot shorter. So, if you would please read the title.
Ordnance number 2022-09. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $1,800,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay the cost of improving and expanding the city's sanitary sewage system by constructing and reconstructing sanitary sewers, forest mains, and lift stations, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. The real difference between this and the last one is really just the, the maximum maturity of the notes, which is 240 months. With this versus the other, what, Mr. Dordio, is there any...
Yeah, yeah, the other thing I will say, that both similarities is actually, the city's not paying the debt on this, it's another party, third party. In this instance, it's going to be, there's the spring run development, and all the related TIF monies will go toward paying for this project. That's the first thing we know, so it won't be the city water sewer or tax dollars in that respect, paying that income tax. The second thing is, is the project was 1 million, estimated, Roger estimated 1,550. I asked them just in case, to bump that up, just in case something crazy would happen regarding pricing, so that's why you see 1,800,000. Obviously, we'll only issue whatever the cost is, but I just want everyone to know that. Yes, sir.
So, the main difference is, one set of bonds is being paid back by the TIF.
Yes.
The other set of bonds is being paid back by...
By property owners.
Through the city, but, but, but the assessments.
It'll go through the county, it does, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing nothing further?
I would motion to suspend the rules, place this on third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick. Would you call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvestry?
Yes.
Okay. The rules are suspended. Mr. Sanders?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Sylvestry?
Yes.
Ordnance number 2022-09 passes, brings us to ordinance number 2022-10. It's the last piece of legislation this evening, and Mr. Apollo, looks like it's one of the shortest ones, so you're ending on a high note.
There you go.
If you would please read the title, I would appreciate it.
Ordnance number 2022-10. Approving the execution and delivery of a development agreement with the Worcester Development Company, LTD.
And this will be presented by Mr. Reynolds. It's slated for three readings. Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Biden-Dyke. This really accompanies our last piece of legislation, and the last piece of legislation, we spent the money, and this is one of the ways we're going to get it paid back, is we're going to enter into an agreement with the spring run development people. The agreement's attached there, and spells out how the money's going to be repaid into the TIF. And I think, just by way of foreshadowing, this is the way I think the TIF works, is that, you know, we'll see, as different pieces of the project come along, we'll have legislation on the spending side of it, and then as different property owners come along, as we anticipate and hope, we'll have development agreements with them, as we, you know, similar in form to this, where they make certain commitments on their development, which, again, using this as an example, and in this particular agreement, they've committed to build 91 properties over a timeframe spelled out in that agreement, and there are financial consequences if they fail to meet that, because, again, it's that, the whole idea of the TIF is the increase in value generated by the project, that increase in value generates additional revenues for governmental entities involved. Again, I would like to see this go to third and final.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second. Tie.
Yeah, it was a tie.
Give it.
All right. Mr. Sylvestry?
I'll second.
Second it. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvestry?
Yes.
And Warden?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. I look to you again, Mr. Reynolds.
I think we've covered it pretty much. I would just move that the ordinance number 2022-10 will be adopted.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any further discussion? I think this is what the TIF is all about, and move us as a city forward, so. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvestry?
Yes.
And Warden?
Yes.
All right. Ordnance number 2022-10 brings us to miscellaneous portion. One person has signed up for the public portion. Ms. Houston, please take the lectern, state your name and address, please, and two minutes. And as you've been here before, the clock is there.
Well, the first thing I want to say is you already have my name and address on the card, on this, from outside, and I'm, most of us are resenting having our name and address on the YouTube, so that everybody knows where we live, and since you already have it on the list, we're asking that that part of it, which also takes part of the two minutes, be removed, since you already have the list, if that's making some sense. The second thing I would like to mention is that nowhere in our speaking at these meetings is there a list in the minutes. So, when we speak and say something, it may be on YouTube, but it's not listed in the minutes that we were here. And we're thinking that that issue would be just as good for you as for us, because if something were to happen, or someone were to say something that someone was upset with, either on council or in our group, it seems to me it would be good to be in the minutes. So, those are the two things that we're asking you to change, because we really appreciated being allowed to speak here. I don't want to take any of that away, but having our name listed all over with our addresses is uncomfortable, and we'd like to have something in the minutes. Thank you. Oh, yeah, I said it.
Now, it's council's turn. Ms. Knappick?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say thank you and congratulations to the firefighters that were sworn in. Very happy to have them. The second thing I'd like to talk about is I had the opportunity to attend the Child Abuse Prevention Month Community Event on April 28, 2022, and what I was so impressed with is that they nominate Law Enforcement Officer of the Year, and out of the nine officers who were nominated, five of those were from the city of Worcester. The winner was from the city of Worcester. The officers who were nominated is Officer Stacy Chuhai, and Officer Chris Hartzler, Detective Juan MacLeod, Officer Danielle Schlickemeyer, and Officer Jordan Telquist. Those are the officers who were nominated, and it was so touching to listen to what they go through in dealing with these child abuse cases. It, it's amazing that, how they go above and beyond what they're required to do as police officers, but their humanity is, is just touching, and I was very moved. The person who actually was awarded the 2021 Law Enforcement Officer of the Year award was our detective Juan MacLeod from our police department. So, I would like to congratulate all of the nominees, including... And it was so touching to listen to what they go through in dealing with these child abuse cases. It's amazing that, how they go above and beyond what they're required to do as police officers, but their humanity is just touching. And I was very moved. The person who actually was awarded the 2021 Law Enforcement Officer of the Year award was our detective Juan MacLeod from our police department. So I would like to congratulate all of the nominees, including those from the Wayne County Sheriff's Office and from Medway. But I would certainly like to congratulate all of our nominees from the city, as well as Juan MacLeod, who was the recipient of the award. And I would also like to recognize Scott Rotolo, who was a nominee for the 2021 Child Advocate of the Year award. For those people who think that police officers maybe don't have as much humanity as they should, I urge you to listen to the stories that were told, and what they did, and how they went above and beyond in these particular circumstances. So I would like to say congratulations to everyone, and thank them for their service, particularly in that particular arena. That's all.
Mr. Cavan?
I was thinking about what Ms. Houston had said, as far as, if we can determine that the speaker is indeed a Worcester resident, we really don't need to announce what street and house number they're at. I can see your point. The other thing is, I didn't know that, I didn't realize, I guess, that we weren't included in the minutes of what they're saying. But again, that's another valid point, so hopefully we can take that into consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Myers?
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. Ms. Knappich, I attended the luncheon as well. It was a very interesting, emotional, and beating, and the numbers and statistics were somewhat alarming that the speaker gave. But it was a very proud moment to be there and have all of our fellow officers who were nominated. If I remember correctly, Juan MacLeod was also, is a repeat award winner, so it wasn't a one-time deal. This kind of describes his demeanor and behavior, so that was a thing that was really enjoyable to be at. And with regard to the minutes, I think that any public speaking from people in our residents of our community should be included, because it's part of the official meeting, because we have not yet adjourned. So I think that, since it's part of the official meeting, unless they're going to speak after we adjourn, then it should be part of the minutes. That's all I have this evening.
Mr. Sanders?
I have nothing to add, Mr. President.
Mr. Silvestri?
Nothing to add. We certainly have safety forces within the city of Worcester to be proud of, and I want to thank all of them for all that they do. And it is great to have 20 more sworn EMS and firefighters on our staff officially, anyway. So thank you for all that they do, and don't forget to vote tomorrow. Finally, I would like to see if the Public Utilities Committee, which is myself as chair, and also Bob Reynolds and Jen Warden on the Public Utilities Committee, I'd like to see if we could put together and put on the calendar a meeting for June 6. That is not next meeting, but the one after that. I know with the announcement of the soon departure of our manager there, Nathan Coy, I know he and Roger were looking at going over and reviewing the five-year plan. There's a number of upgrades to the wastewater facility that are slated, not just for this year, but for the coming years within the five-year window. And they were going to go through and review that plan, and kind of solidify it, and just kind of give it the once-over, so that there can be a smooth passing of the baton to whoever the new manager ends up being. But just to give it some visibility, so we know what's coming, and so that Roger and Nathan can both kind of brief counsel on that. So that will be the subject of that meeting. I think an hour would probably be sufficient, so we could plan on 6:30 before the council meeting on June 6, if that works for Councilman Reynolds. Okay, all right.
What time did you say, Dave?
6:30. 6:30 on Monday, June 6.
Ms. Warden?
Thank you. I'd just like to thank the residents of Oakley and Saunders and that neighborhood that, you know, reached out to me and everyone else on council to find out what was possible with